At this time, we'll call it Tuesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. We have Larry McDevitt back from vacation all refreshed and ready to go. Mike Stinas, myself, Jack Lee. What are we supervisors for the county? Lisa and Bjorn from the Otter's Office, Luan Goki, our administrative assistant, and David Hare, our county engineer. I would just point out that twenty fifty-three years ago today, I was on my way to Farley for my wedding.
Well, congratulations.
Absolutely.
Fifty-three years is an accomplishment for anyone. A lot of compromise.
Okay, David.
I just have one permit today. From an entrance permit for Shannon Crest. Township Section eighteen, a class two residential permit on one hundred and ninety seven. Reviewed by Roger and recommend approval. Salute.
Motion in a second to approve the entrance permit for Shannon Crest. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And I provide some updates on the projects that we're working on. The Z thirty-four paving there on the west side of Preston. They're still doing some touch-up work on the shoulder. Payment margins haven't been done yet, but the paving is complete. And then some rightability measurements will be taken on that road sometime in the future. On Z twenty, Manassas paving should hopefully be complete next week. It's working on that through the week here in the weekend.
Where is Z twenty at?
That is from Sprayville North about two, three miles.
Payment around, goes up Strummer Kylie.
Yep, stop short.
Yeah, you go through the newer pavement up there, right around the corner, but.
Yeah.
So then them have all the safety rumble strips in the middle and the and the edges too?
I don't think, I'm not sure. I'd have to check.
Because that one in south of Preston there, we meet up with Quentin County, theirs has all that right there. It'd be odd if we would not.
I'll see what Mike's got in there.
Yeah, it would be nice if it did.
I think we were informed one time that there was money available for that.
Yep, safety money.
Yeah.
I drove on it a little bit Sunday going down to the church dinner.
Well, it'll wake you up, sure as heck, yeah. It'll wake you up and get on.
Hundred eighty-eight street, the Dan Schrader's working on starting the deck for me. These have been set. Taylor's Bridge, their proceeding should be a couple of weeks till they're pouring the deck there. Had some fault bridge inspections done earlier this week. Crews are working on completing some ditch poles and cutting brush. Cool patching the four seven fifth. Having called with this complete and seeded it and cleaned up and as the gravel compacts will continue to put down some more and lay it smooth till it settles down and then we should be good there.
Yeah, just in time for the season. Did I also see a couple of day bridges that were on your schedule?
We have three, three day river bridges yet to be working on due to the fall and things. And we're going to address a couple driveway extensions without a permit, so. Four weeks' work.
Did you say without a permit?
Yes.
And that's what he said. So you're gonna go tear them out?
No, no, we won't. We won't go that far. If I don't have to.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave. Here, David. Okay, Lisa, do you wanna go again?
I will do some of mine.
Okay.
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty first, twenty twenty one, work proceedings. As written by Honorable Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Salute. Second, motion in a second minute. I must say, you have that talent, Pam.
I got it.
All those in favor?
With the line or the method?
With the with her line.
Right.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of six hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
Look to prove.
Second, motion in a second to approve.
A big chunk of that was for the communications thing.
Yeah, DCIA is accordingly. A lot much. It's harder.
ECIA is or Jackson County Economic Alliance, I thought.
Communications on this two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's what happens. For the city of Oklahoma.
Yeah, that was two hundred four thousand, wasn't it?
Started to swallow some of them, but that's worth the price of doing business.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Yeah, I can check in kind of economic alliance, those eighteen thousand seven fifty.
So it seems kind of odd today because this is a claims week. It does seem kind of odd, and so I would like to explain to you. But today, I do need a motion to approve handwritten warrants for the Prevention Coalition Drug Grant to ASAC for eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents for the September support. The Bellevue Chamber seventy-five dollars for dues, CADCA three hundred dollars for dues. Julie Julie Fern two hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for promotion supplies. And one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars for compliance checks and the Macocana Chamber for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The reason that I'm asking for handwritten warrants today, instead of putting them into the regular auditor's office warrants for the week, is because this is the end of the grant year. The new grant year starts October first, so all of these expenses are specifically for the Prevention Drug Coalition Grant, and they need to be written in this year. So the the six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars that you approved for warrants, they're approved today, but they're not really issued until Friday, which is October first. These checks for the Prevention Coalition Grant need to be wrote today to get this fiscal year's date on those checks. So instead of, and the reason that we had to wait is because they did do some compliance checks recently, and they wanted to also include that into the to the to the grant. So that's why I'm asking for handwritten warrants to comply with what they're asking.
Okay, sounds reasonable. Um, this, these are basically pastures.
There, yep.
Make the motion to approve.
I would second.
Motion in a second to approve the handwritten warrants. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
My last item today is a discussion of possible motion, but I would like to wait till Shelley can come and discuss what she is proposing. So I will table that until she can come over and we can talk about what she's proposing. Well, we can call her over right now if you want. It's up to you. If you have time, you can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not due till nine twenty.
Yeah, and I guess just as a side note, kind of some cleanup stuff. I'm ready. Jack was in yesterday. He did sign the the proposal for the Motorola equipment, so we've got that moving forward. I did talk to Lynn yesterday. I had a conversation with him. There is a a payment schedule. It's kind of nice to know.
I see that.
Yeah, so.
In the hundred and forty-five page transcript.
Yeah.
This is a separate email. Was that was that in the in the same hundred and forty-five?
Yeah.
Oh, I got sent to me.
The payment schedule and the proposal from our consultant was his.
Yeah, I can.
Separate email was from the consultant.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's what I received was that.
That's not the actual.
And I have that, and I did, as you asked last week, I did send an email to Jamie Jamie Cashman at ISAC, and he has yet to return my email, so I can't answer that question yet. But I at least did reach out to him and I would hope, if there's nothing else, I'll reach back out to him so I we can get an answer.
Well, I I guess before we write the check.
Well.
Or, yeah, I don't know. If you don't, then maybe even move aside.
Then I need to contact somebody else so we can get an answer. So I will continue to reach out for that. Yeah.
Okay.
I think other than that, I'll turn it over to Shelley.
Good morning.
Good morning. The postage machine that we have right now releases up at the end of October. And in order to get the ball rolling by the time that, and a new one here by the time that lease expires. I'm bringing to your attention a proposal, several proposals for a new postage machine. I got three bids from the current company that we have, from Advanced Business Systems. The lease cost, the total, if you look at the the paper, at the bottom of the page, the total cost over the life of the lease would be thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. Then the next one over would be a new company postal source for thirty thousand, thirty-four dollars and twenty cents. And then Pitney Bowes would be thirty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars.
So the specs look really similar. The lease period is shorter for postal source. Are we familiar with postal source?
Um, they have been around for twenty-five years, at least twenty-five years, if not longer. They had contacted me a few years ago, went back when we got the the last lease. And I said, well, I didn't know you existed. But I would keep them in mind for this time, but everything that I have read online, they're very replicable and.
So where are they from?
Uh, they are based down in Mount Joy, down by Bannport. Yeah, yeah.
So. Run that far.
I get.
Yeah, so they they've got maintenance people closer than the other two places than Pitney Bowes, which is the third one.
So my question on these three bids, are they using the same type or brand of equipment, or they got their own equipment?
The first two are both Hasler Neopost machines. The third one is a Pitney Bowes machine.
Only difference, I see, is the lease period sixty months, thirty-six.
You're, yes, and you're paying the same amount of money over the life of the lease, but it's a shorter lease. So my recommendation would be postal source, the middle one. The current company that we have, the closest, it's based out of Ocross, Wisconsin. And our maintenance man, it, he basically deals with all of eastern Iowa, what's, uh, what northwestern Illinois and southwestern Wisconsin.
So this is the same type of machine that we're we have now?
It's the same brand. I believe it's the same model, but I'm not sure.
Okay, do we have a lot of maintenance issues?
We can, we can. This current.
It would be nice to have somebody thirty miles south rather than.
Well, my point is being, Pitney Bowes is not that much higher, but it's more reputable machine that we, are we paying for maintenance too?
That may, well, the maintenance for Pitney Bowes is included in that lease, so that that bottom line includes the maintenance costs. There's a lot of mail that goes through the courthouse. Shelley, what's your what's your postage budget? Forty to forty-five thousand dollars, just the postage. And then if you take into consideration at election time, if we mail out six thousand, seven thousand, you know, envelopes, then you need to make sure that that postal machine works every day because otherwise we're in trouble.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's my point. I said, we have a lot of.
So we do need maintenance. Yeah, and we have had, unfortunately, we have had to kind of push them a little bit. That was kind of an issue with our current is when we lost our 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 local repair person and we have issues. I mean, Treasurer's Office is sending out stuff responding. Yeah, he's the the one that we have now is not as responsive. Right, that's what I'm trying to say. Not that, not that, well, you know, not that the courthouse is any different than anything else, but the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, the auditor's office, I mean, even in sometimes when the recorder's office does a significant amount of votes and snowmobiles and all of that. It gets run hard.
Well, that's my point. Is there a is there a better machine out there? Better piece of equipment that doesn't need that?
No, they'll, they all have, after a certain period of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm only gonna, I talked to someone who's got Pitney Bowes now here in town, and she said that the Pitney Bowes maintenance people, they know their stuff, but trying to get them here, I think they, the maintenance people have, Pitney Bowes has the majority of the postage machines in Iowa, basically. But and she says that trying to get somebody there, it can be three and four days to get somebody there.
That's not.
You know what?
Especially with the voting thing, they shorten the time and they take it away from the dates, so you have fifteen days less time.
Yes.
And it's really important to get them.
So it's a little bit like our east door. If you think of our east door, we got a very good, we got a very good deal on our east door. We didn't know that the service was coming out of Chicago. And when we need our east door fixed, it can't be three days from now. It needs to be within the next several hours. Yeah.
Before it comes to. So when you said at least period, sixty months or thirty-six months, but that, but the total on the bottom reflects per year, correct?
Correct. Well, no, the the total at the bottom is the life of the lease, the life to once the contract is over, that's the price that we're gonna pay regardless of the time period.
Okay, I'm confused.
So that first one.
I mean, are we getting five years for the first one for that bottom price, and we're only getting three years for the next one for that bottom price?
We're paying for for three years for that middle one, five years for the first one. So the total amount that we're gonna pay that company over the life of the lease is that figure at bottom, regardless of time. So sooner, so the third one, we will own it after thirty-six years, for thirty-six months. Actually, now that I'm, I got.
Some things that are just.
Um, she told me on late on Friday that that's, she got new information, or was it yesterday morning? It's over sixty months.
So they're all based over a sixty-month period, not the lease.
Yes, and I did not.
Middle one, yeah, okay, that's why I'm confused. If I'm paying that much for three years, then 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 either one of the other two are cheaper.
Right, absolutely.
That's right.
But the cost is on second from the bottom per year.
Yeah, per year. That's what I should be looking at per year, right?
Yes.
And what's the difference between the two, just because we're starting?
The second line from the bottom.
Yes, per year.
So the leases from when to when?
From uh, from November first through five years.
Five years, so. With with the middle one saying thirty-six months, can they change that after three years?
No, we own it. After the the life of the of that lease, we own the the piece of equipment.
In each one of these, okay, okay.
Yeah.
You're recommending the.
The postal source.
And you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what you're recommending. You know your machine and your business.
Make a motion to approve the lease with postal source as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve lease with postal source. Any further discussion? Seeing all those in favor? All right, I motion carry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time we're recessed, so we're joined by Sarah Cavanport. Sarah. Attorney.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Come on. So as you all know, it's been five, six, ten years, I don't know. With litigation going on, we chose not to join the lawsuit, however, now that they're close to a settlement. What they're trying to do is get as many entities to participate as possible, and the reason for that is the distributors and the manufacturers, they don't want to keep doing this. They want this to be it. So they're by participating, all we're doing is waiving any claim we may have. So we to a future suit, so we wouldn't be able to go back and sue them ourselves, which I don't know that we would want to do anyway. By the more, the more counties in Iowa that participate, the more money that will flow into Iowa. And then my understanding is there's some formula that the Attorney General's Office has, that they've kind of done at the national level, based on population, and I don't know what else. They determine how much money I'll go into each county that participates. So even though we are a non-litigating county, we can still get some funds. I don't know how much, and I don't know what the restrictions are gonna be for those funds. That's something that hopefully will be coming out here shortly. The reason I want to meet with you today was just to update you on that. And then I received information from the Attorney General's Office, and the next step into this, whether we choose to participate or not, is to register with the National Settlement Website, and then by doing that, then that's where the information's gonna come from as far as the settlement information and and whatnot. To do so, we have to have, we have to designate one person to be the authorized signer, and then that person's email is what we use to register, and then they will get all of the information. When it's time, if we decide we want to participate and we want to sign documents, it's all done electronically. So it's all done through this DocuSign. So I guess what I need from you is to decide who the authorized signer is gonna be. My opinion, and I have talked to Lisa and she's okay being the person, would be to have Lisa, because she is here, you know, she's here full-time, so if things are coming in, she's checking her email regularly. I don't know what kind of timeframe we're gonna get when they finally send the document saying decide.
You're saying if we decide on authorized signer, that we are going to participate, you're already acknowledging that.
No.
So I guess my thought was, we've talked about this.
Sign either way. I don't know.
Two years ago or whenever it was, and we decided that we weren't affected that much to the point where we wanted to file.
Right.
But I certainly think we should probably participate.
I agree.
If it affects the whole state or the outcome, yeah.
I think we should.
I think so too.
Okay.
And we we would, if you need a motion, I would make a motion to participate and have Lisa be there.
I will second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? You're okay with that, Lisa?
I am. Yeah, Sarah and I did talk yesterday, and I know how to forward emails.
I had to and talk to you, you know, so who should be involved at this point, and do we have to have our law enforcement that tell us what our what our numbers are and things like that? We're really not into that.
No, and any statistics are already at the state level, I think, so I don't know if the state needs any information from us to determine how much we get. It does say that there are some counties will get nothing. I can't imagine we would be one of those because we are in the top third population-wise. And, you know, I come from a county that's got four thousand population of the entire county. Those are the kind of counties probably that are not going to be getting any. So it's just kind of a waiting game. We'll be getting information that'll tell us what the fund's gonna be used for and that kind of thing, so that we can figure out all of the logistics.
Yeah, well, if we participate, yeah. I I didn't mean to call you on Saturday morning when you were stewing tomatoes, but, you know.
Actually, I was shopping wood at that.
Oh, with that information, all those in favor? All right.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
All right.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'll let you know when we got more information and I'll work with Lisa. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll be joined by Elizabeth Thompson, her first appearance before the board.
Missy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So this is my first update to the Board of Supervisors since I started in mid-August. So just to kind of go a run through of the number of permits and other things that we've done, just so you know, it's been a combination of myself and the interim director that worked works down at our neighbor in County Quentin. So the other thing I want to note is that we did have some help from the HR Director. So there was a little jumble confusion, I guess, when I came on because we had two people doing some of the same work. It was duplicated, and then I came in and it was duplicated, but or replicated, I guess, but I went in and got it all cleaned up, so we know what we're doing now, and we don't have that extra paperwork floating around that was sort of unnecessary. So from what I know, from the period of August until today, we have done eighteen septic permits. We have done twenty-six septic site assessments and consultations, and some of the numbers higher there obviously because we still have some pending permits that will be coming into us. We've done nine well permits, eight time of transfers. We've had five nuisance complaints, four dog bites, nine water tests. And just so you know, the water tests were actually put on hold. There was a note for the grant saying to hold off on that until I started, which I wasn't aware of until recently, but so they have kind of been put on hold. We do get a lot of requests for them. I did one septic training through IDPH and one Port of Health Rules training through IDPH. I've done estimated revenue based on a number of permits for three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's just an estimate because I was told that some, I guess, checks that came in for permits weren't cashed right away. They may have been sitting there, so in other words, there might have been a bunch of checks that were not cashed prior to me coming on, so I'm not sure exactly what the revenue is for the last couple of months. And this isn't like a true reflection. It's just based on the number that I'm aware of. Um, some future things that we'll be doing, the DNR sent a twenty-eight agreement to us. I wasn't really sure what it was at first, but it's an agreement that we found out was signed in two thousand and three through the county. It does require county board approval, so it went through the State's Attorney's Office and myself, and I know that Mike was aware of the agreement as well, but basically, it's just the DNR putting in a new procedure to make sure that we're not putting private wells near contaminated sites. Anyway, we didn't want to move forward with signing this agreement, so what it basically did was prompted us to know that we need to do a review of our ordinances. So right now, we're kind of at a peak time with people wanting to get their septic installed and some wells and things like that. So once that slows down, I'm gonna sit down and do a review of of our ordinances and make sure that everything's up to par and that we're in compliance with the state. And then at that time, we would review the new twenty-eight agreement and determine if it's something that we're gonna sign. There was a deadline for that agreement, but just so you know, the DNR is aware that we're in review of everything and that they're okay with us holding off on that for now.
How does that tie in with the matrix systems or the cattle and hog compliance?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. The ordinances that I have, I'm not sure if they're all up to date. And that's something that I, I know I just work environmental health, but I I think that it would be good if there was some something where, you know, we can go in and like, no, things are up to date, because I was given a binder and I didn't get access to some of the electronic files until later, so. Anyway, that's just something that I was thinking, and then another thing I'd like to see happen is to have our ordinances on our website. I think that this being such a rural area, it would be great if we could have more on the website, even like paperwork and things like that. I have, you know, people coming into the office where maybe they can just, you know, print it off at home.
That'd be a great idea.
Yeah, I just think, you know, as far. Yeah, I just think, you know, as far as um. Some of the previous counties I worked in, they're on, you know, ordinances are right there, people can pull them up, there's transparency, they know what it is. I know what it is, and it's, you know, not fumbling through papers and trying to, you know, just to keep everybody on the same page. Um, but I know as far as my, my department and my office, I really wanted to. Build up that, that part of the website and make it just really accessible and, and have a, a lot of information on there for people.
Well, certainly, this day and age that uh, that's the way we're going, you're still gonna have the old school.
Yeah.
It's gonna kind of just wanna sit and talk to you and help you fill it out.
Absolutely, and I, and I also know it puts a strain on IT, you know, I'm aware.
I said me.
Well, I mean, it is a lot of work, you know, and then you add more to the website, and I know there can be other issues that pop up when you're putting more and more on the website and things like that. But I just think that, you know, we, this is a really large county, I mean, for me to drive from one end of, you know, one end of the county to the next. It can take some, you know, forty-five minutes. So, you know, when I think of maybe some of our, our aging population, or, or, you know, people with kids are not able to, you know, make. A trip here to get the information they need, or maybe it can't wait to get mailed to them. If it was accessible on the website, I think that would be really awesome.
I think it's the way, I mean, that's what everybody's doing.
Yeah.
Going back to the ordinances, in the past, haven't we had ECIA do a review of our ordinances?
I can't speak about that, that is called the codification of ordinances, and it needs to be done every so many years, and um. Marla Quinn is who I've been working with at ECIA, I guess Christina, or excuse me, I will, Elizabeth, I will share that with you. But we, we are having her do a review of our ordinances, and so we do know that we have an issue with the. Zoning ordinances, and I was gonna try and get with Christina to talk to Marla to try and work through it. Unfortunately, they will get, they will get to it faster than I will.
Yeah.
So that is, so yes, we're in the process, and I think it would be good, I will give you Marla's phone number, and I think if you reach out to her and work with her. It will go really relatively fast.
She's, she's very easy to work with.
She is, yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
And, and we're then willing to come down here and sit with her laptop and, and work through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great, cuz I think it's gonna be kind of a daunting task, you know, especially for.
And it's something that she's used to doing.
It, it needs to be done, yeah, it needs to be done, there's no doubt about it, we need to do it.
Well, I mean, take for instance, the twenty-eighty with the DNR, I mean, that's basically a template of some kind that was written up in two thousand and three, like we said.
Right.
When Sarah read it, well, chapter thirty-six wasn't even mentioned in there.
Right, and we actually didn't even, couldn't even find a copy of the agreement that we had signed. Um, I actually got that from the DNR, and it's possible, you know, we weren't required to keep a copy.
It's probably in the cloud.
It's probably in the cloud, or, you know, filed away somewhere.
We have cloud back.
It's hard to say.
But that's why we ask, and, and I guess what I would like to say is if you would supply us with the minutes um, from the Department of. That you're having with your, your commissioners, um, your health department, and that way then we scan them in and we have a copy for long-term. It may very well be here, uh, it could be in a box downstairs, but they were never, we were never given those, those minutes. And so we may have that agreement, it could be potentially downstairs in a box.
Yeah.
Basically, it worked twenty years, so it's a review anyways.
You know what, we are, we are diligent on getting stuff scanned in and for long-term storage of things, so um. That's what I would suggest is just when your um, Department of Health meets, and wants the minutes, go ahead and give us everything and we'll scan it in. And if you want me to share it with the board, I'd be more than happy to, just like I do for Veterans Affairs. The other question I do have is, is kinda going back to what you said, Larry, is the matrix. We do get them in their management update, is it the board's desire that I present those? Um, it just requires a signature on my part, do you wanna see those? I mean, does the board wanna see them? I just did one last week.
I don't know a lot about those.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I, what I'm saying about the matrix is they haven't changed anything in years, they talk about it every year, we talk about it at, in Des Moines every year. And they haven't changed anything, and if there's a way to get around it, they're gonna get around the DNR.
Yep.
So basically, it's, when you, it's through the DNR, but the DNR don't wanna be involved. That's basically what it comes down to.
I think, I, I, I don't necessarily think we need to see the report, but I just think it's, it would be. More comfortable for us to know that they are, of, you know, filing it.
Yeah, no, that's fine, we can.
Just let us know that, such and such a.
Well, I would like to, I mean, to make sure that they're all coming in. I mean, some might.
I don't know if we would know.
How many, okay, how many are out there and how many reports should we have? That would be my question.
Well, the DNR should be able to tell you.
I will tell you.
Ag-related, they don't have to get a permit to build a building, and if it's under fifty thousand head.
Right.
They don't have to go to the matrix. So they built three of them for ninety-nine thousand.
Which were, uh, manure management thing, or not?
We have the original manure management plans, they came, a lot of them came in a three-ring binder. And just like I said, we scanned them all in, we can go back and we can look and see how many manure management plans we have, and then try and.
And see how many are coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know a lot about this, so this is definitely something that happened.
I mean, there's very, very little oversight there, and it seems like what there is, isn't really being focused on very much. I mean, they say, well, you can only go up to seven hundred and seventy-five pounds per animal, well, who's meant monitoring that? Nobody, yeah, I mean, we had a guy in here and he says, well, it was eight hundred, and he can only, well, we'll, we'll only take him up to seven seventy-five, and they changed. And I'm like, okay, you're doing it right in front of us, and, and who's gonna, nobody's watching that.
Well, that's your new committee appointment.
And I don't even know how you would track that or work.
Well, you know how they did that, I mean, they could, you can have no more than fifty-two thousand, so they built three of them, met fifty-one thousand. You got three billion instead of one. You know, and, and if you got a filter for the exhaust, it, it could be a burner filter, it could be a hundred.
Yeah, there's no explanation. The one up at Leisure Lake, no, there's no wells within a thousand feet, and they show that on the map. Well, you go another three hundred feet, and here's Leisure Lake with a hundred wells, and all of that drains right into that water, or water shit. So there's a lot of things that are a little on the lax side or.
They ask all these rules, but they don't follow through.
I'm sure there's nobody, there's no control, there's no oversight, I mean, who's gonna know if somebody spread a, a thousand gallons of manure or ten thousand gallons? I mean, who's gonna know that?
I mean, I know that some, you know, health departments do monitor that, they're required, you know, people are required to submit. You know, call in and say when they're gonna spread, um, how much they're spreading, they, I mean. And I've actually implemented ordinances for that specifically in another county, so. That's something that we can look at doing if we needed to.
That'd be great.
Yeah, just require more man work, though.
We were doing a job one time in uh, Hanover, and. And this guy's spreading manure all the way around the town, and it just reeked, I mean, it was, I brought my truck home, I left the windows open at night because. I mean, the whole interior just smelled, and I was at the local eating place, and it doesn't anybody, well, these are really nice guys, we don't say anything on this line. My god, everybody in town would smell like they'd been living in a barn, and why, I mean, that's one that should have been plowed in instead of surface black.
Right, and do we know if it's common or, or human waste, and those are other things that probably aren't being monitored.
I know they plow in the human waste out here in North of town, when they do the, or the.
Oh, really?
Control for uh, McCoventa Silver Plant pumps it out to a applicator.
Like something new today.
Yeah.
It's interesting, 'cause a couple of years ago it happened, and it just stopped the mountain, it was, it was pretty bad.
Wow.
And it was four inches thick, but the DNR and everything came in, and it was all legit.
Okay, and it was like.
And it was his own operation, and it was a cus- custom guy that did it, and yeah, they were legit.
Human waste?
No, this was a confinement.
Okay.
It just sounds like from August until now, um, eighteen septic sounds like a lot.
Yeah.
There's, there's quite a few, yeah, and there's still a.
I mean, is that, I, I'm, I'm assuming that the eighteen septics go along with new construction, correct?
Yes. So, I mean, I'm not sure what, historically what the numbers are, so it's hard for me to say, but yes, this is a lot, or no, it's not. Um, for this county, I'm not really sure.
I, I can see your well test gaining ground, I mean, you're still free for it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the water tests are still free, we, there's quite, I mean, I've got them on the calendar, they could come in daily, the request for them, they'll, so.
So they've been testing pretty good, or?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they've been testing pretty good, um, the biggest issue I've found is that, um. Well, it sounds like in the past, um, the previous sanitarians might have taken water from like outside sources. It really should come like from where you get your drinking water, though, and the biggest um, issue I found is a lot of the new sink faucets that. Um, we buy today, it's really hard to get the aerator off, and the aerator can hold contaminants and things like that, so. Um, I'm finding that, you know, I'm having to do some retesting, or maybe testing out of the kit for the bathroom sink instead of the kitchen sink, cuz you can't get the aerator.
It's interesting because. It just took one for Dubuque County, and they want you to take it from the spigot closest to the well. So it's an outside spigot that's closest to the well, you run it for five minutes, you, you heat the spigot up or X amount of time, and. And you take your test and take it.
Yeah, yeah.
And two of them taken, they both come back fine, but you took them from the same spigot.
Yeah.
And do you do a time of transfer letter, a final letter for, after the inspection?
Yeah, so there should, there's a final letter that comes out.
So I know our former sanitarium did also, but Dubuque County is not.
Okay, yeah, every county varies, every, um, I guess. Um, method for water testing varies, um, you know, I've, I've done a few different methods. Um, what I've found is running the water for, you know, a ten-minute period is the best way, um. You know, but I've gone in and done the torch and all that, but really, it's, if you run it for a ten-minute period, it should be good. Um, but like I said, that aerator can, you know, especially in the kitchen sink where people might be handling meat and, you know, other things like that, and they might touch that. It can contaminate.
You're turning that thing back and forth, you're touching that.
Yeah, but that's where people are getting their water.
Take a vice grip and take that off, somebody might get mad at you.
You can just throw it right off, on the new ones, it's like, I don't wanna break somebody's sink, so, you know, we're, I'm looking at alternative. Um, places in the house to get the water from, if I can't get that off, because like I said, it can be holding the bacteria.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I just took one into D.C., and their, their letter says, take it from the closest spigot from the well.
Yeah, I know Frank, he took it from an outside source, um, so people are like, oh, you gotta come in my kitchen, I'm like, well. Um, and we can, we can take them from an outside source, but uh.
The issue with it is what, what I hear is, they don't want that water. Running through the softener in your water filter and all these charcoal filters and all that before you take the test.
So that's, that's something, when we go out and do the test, we're not just taking the water sample, we're going out, we're checking the wellhead. We're checking to make sure that the distance between the well and the septic are proper distances. We're checking to make sure everything's intact, um, we're checking in the basement to see, you know, is the water being processed through a water softener or. Chlorinated um, factor, so we're looking at all of that, and it gets put on a big form from the DNR, it all gets filled out. Um, just to kind of give us clues if the test would come back with like bacteria or high nitrate levels, like you have a good idea of maybe why that's happening. Um, but for the most part, I've had most water tests come back good.
I mean, basically, you're checking for coliform back, or nitrite, right?
Right, coliform bacteria, yeah. Um, but everything's been pretty good, I, I've seen a lot of, um, a lot of them come back that might have historically been not good. So that just comes down to a factor of, you know, maybe it's, you know, there's an issue with the wellhead, or maybe there is um, some other contaminant.
Most people don't understand is that once, over the years, and if you have that, you're well-maintained, and if you open that, you should shock it. Because you, once you open that wellhead, you're contaminated, basically.
Right, right.
You never have it shocked, it should be shocked.
Right, and we recommend to have a plumber do that, someone a professional do it, I have had people ask about, you know, how do I shock my own well? We do have some information on how to do that, but um, we, we typically wanna recommend for a professional to do it.
There's a hundred ways, and they'll tell you they're right.
Yeah.
How much weight you got?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having me.
I hope everything's working out good for you, and if you need anything, let us know.
Thank you very much.
So when you go out and do the well tests and stuff, are you locating them with that GUSMO? Ones that are located, or have you been? I don't know what it's called, but it's a little thing that.
Are you talking about the GPS?
Yeah, the GPS looker.
You know, I was told that I should have one, I don't know where Kimberly might have put it, I don't, I don't have one.
I was gonna say, it was there, cuz I know, it was in a drawer, I can tell that it was in a drawer in the, that old flat. Um, drafting table, whatever, it was in that drawer.
Might still be there.
I would ask, will the table not move?
Well.
I would ask Christina.
Technology today, believe it or not, I can do it on the cell phone, too.
Oh.
Yeah, so if you go into Google Maps, when I get to the site, there's a little. Um, you know, a show, a little beacon that shows where I'm standing, and I hold it over the wellhead, and I just double-tap on it, and it shows me the, the coordinates.
Wonderful. Yeah. I mean, that's something we're trying to get into, you know, when they're selling property or different things like that, they can. You know, we're some, I mean, it's kind of an issue at Leisure Lake, cuz some of the wells are not on the same property that we're being used for.
I think all of the turtle heads got done, I don't know where that information is at. Um, I guess my question then is, how do we get that? If, if the, the turtle heads from Leisure Lake, if they were put on the beacon system, or if they were put on a layer of some sort. So we can verify where all that information is at. I guess my question to you is, how do we get your information from your cell phone to wherever? I mean, is it compatible, I guess?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
No, I don't, so.
So there's like three hundred, we call them turtle heads, it had to do with the grinding station that is up at Leisure Lake, so all of those three hundred green.
Yeah, the.
The camp.
Yeah.
There's three hundred and twenty-five grinder pumps out there.
So you're wanting, you're wanting to know the coordinates for all of those, is that?
We know that.
For those turtle heads in Leisure Lake, we already know that, the question is, is, so we have a. Septic system or a sanitary sewer, and now you're gonna do wellheads, can we get the information to come together?
I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, I can get the information and give it to somebody, but I'm not sure, like.
You know what I'm saying?
I'm not sure, like.
If she can put her coordinates into the JAS layer, it should. So, so the issue that has come up, and that, and I'm on the Irish border, she oversees the sewer and water systems for the county. Is people were selling those properties and not. Uh, saying that there is a grinder system out there for the septic, for the sewer system.
Legally, I think they have to.
Which is a fifty-two dollar a month payment, while people are buying the property not realizing that they're incurring this expense.
Ongoing debt.
Yeah, and you know, a year or six months later, they're like, hey, you know, you're not paying your bill, you need those, and then they're what? One of them said, well, the guy told me it was paid for. You know, they're just.
That's true, but you have to pay for it every month.
Yeah, so we're trying to get that a little more coordinated, so when you bring the property up on, on beacon. It'll actually show what's there, and it, well, what says, you're saying, the owner's saying, no, there's nothing there, well, there is. You know, explain yourself and kinda catch them that way.
Thing is, that is a, that's a, that's a legal issue anyway, because the disclosure actually asks you them questions, and if you don't disclose that, you're at fault, baby. The, the, the disclosure for a single-family home, that's what it asks you, if there's a private system.
And I read that disclosure, and on the first page, it says, are there any um, structures on the property? And if you say no. You sign it, and that's it, on the second page, it asks you if there's a septic or water system.
So, it depend, it depends on what form you're using, I mean, you can't use the MLS form unless you're in the MLS, but.
I think they might have changed it.
Your attorney has a simple form, there's a minimum of twenty-seven questions that get asked. And I don't know what's all on that, but you have to disclose that there's a private system on there or a public system.
So I know there's issues with Leisure Lake, I haven't even had to go out there yet, believe it or not. So I guess. I guess when, uh, you know, the time comes, I know that things have to be looked at, as far as that goes, I also know there's some other areas in the county that are also having some issues. That need to be looked at.
The thing is with that, though, I mean, with the system that's put in, it's, it's much better than it was, so it's, it's working functional and.
Yeah, the hundreds of septic system. Yeah, the hundreds of septic systems out there and the wells are, I mean, it was a mess. So now all the septic systems are shut down supposedly. And everything gets pumped into a sewage lagoon, I mean, it's got a whole lagoon system like a, a small city with it, all it is is a small city.
Wow, I mean, I heard this, like, I, right when I started, I, there was a complaint about somebody, you know, digging in the ditch, trying to put a septic. System in and I, it was like my day, first day, so I, I don't really know.
Welcome to Jackson County.
Um, but yeah, we'll, we'll figure something else.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Luanne.
All right, calendar for this week. This evening at five o'clock is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Meeting by Zoom for Jack. And on Wednesday, tomorrow, September twenty-ninth, eleven thirty is a Mississippi. From the Coca-Cola River Water Management Authority, um, update on the Isaacs Projects. And that's by Zoom for Larry. At three o'clock afternoon is a workforce consultation with the Department of Labor, and that's by M S Teams for Jack. On Thursday morning, September thirtieth, there is an addition and then now at seven thirty A M. There's a Jackson County Economic Alliance Committee Meeting by Zoom for Jack. At ten A M is a Coca-Cola River Watershed. Um, Zoom meeting on the Coca-Cola Sponsored S R F Project, I hope you know what that means, Larry, that's for you. Um, Friday, October first, at seven thirty A M is a Coca-Cola Leadership Team Meeting, um, by Zoom also for Larry. Monday, October fourth, at ten A M, we have a work session on the former hospital building, um, at the old hospital, at ten A M. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October fifth, at nine A M. I think since Lisa already took care of the other business I had on there, unless you wanna talk about that some more.
No, I just wanna make sure that we do meet on November ninth, because I do need to canvass the election, so.
So we have, yeah.
We'll be here.
Yep, yep.
We need to take action on that, correct?
I'm setting, I'm resetting the time for that.
It's up to you, I mean.
Oh, I thought you had done that, so, okay, well.
Well, we didn't take formal action, we just discussed it, okay.
Um, so if you wanna reschedule the November ninth meeting to eight A M instead of. Um, nine A M, I need a motion to that effect.
Go move.
And moved in second, all those in favor?
I am.
I motion carry.
So, set that up for eight A M, see you bright and early.
And then also with that, I'd like to see you schedule at nine thirty for the cams. Okay, set that time. Yes, I just want her to make sure that we have put it at that time.
Agenda already, so.
Yep, good, thank you.
And on sixteenth.
Okay, this time we'll recess till we're joined. By, are, are taking any action with John? It's just update and.
We, are we approving the pay?
Wasn't that in the claims?
Claims.
We already approved them through the claims.
Yeah.
Me. I didn't think we paid them on this claim, cause he wasn't expecting that you'd pay this time.
No, he talked, he, with the email that he sent, me, because we also had to include a letter, or excuse me, a check for seventy-five dollars to the city of Coca-Cola. To our variance purpose, right, so that was.
It's not a special warrant?
It is not part of the handwritten warrants, it's part of the regular. So yes, both John and Rick are in here to be for the claims, that was part of our six hundred and some thousand.
So, okay, cause I talked to John and he wasn't expecting us to pay on this claim.
That doesn't make any sense, cause he's, cause in the email, he said, this claims period. I mean, you can't approve a claim at ten o'clock and. I mean, we have to process it, so that doesn't make any sense to me. We needed that time to get it in to process it and. But I know that it's in the claims.
It's eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-six cents to Midwest Construction Consultants.
But was it like for Rick a hundred?
That's not enough on the same.
I was gonna say, cause Rick was like a hundred and seventeen, so, I mean, they're in there. And I told Shelley to process that check to the city of Coca-Cola, so we can continue with the variance.
It was under our, or. Let it be under.
Yeah, a hundred and seventeen.
Like twenty dollars.
And two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. He could discuss it, but it's already, yeah.
Yeah, that was the only action he requested was to approve.
If we, if you wanna do any other board or commissions item, like you said, we, we moved ahead with the, with the councils. And uh, I sat in on Larry's meeting for, cause he was on vacation and I sat in on the Irish meeting and. Basically, uh, the reason I did was for the Belvin project. And they're moving forward with that, um, doing the contracts and signing contracts with it. Getting their easements and their right of ways.
Well, that would be my question, you know, when we just talk specifically about, and it's, you know, it's not my job. I guess the question is, is how important is it that we have someone with either a argismo or a phone to, you know, keep track of all of.
Well, Belvin is a little difference, it's their water system, I mean, it's just a water line.
Okay.
Do the metering.
Okay. Okay.
I think, well, I mean, you can certainly take the engineered diagram and say, this is where the line is. And yeah, that's, that's.
When will that go for good?
I think, ask, I don't, the way it sounded, not until next year for sure, yeah. Cause they're still working on the contracts with the attorney and.
And.
Bellevue to buy the water from them. And I think it's just one meter, I'm not sure.
I know there was a difference in cost for everybody's meter, but I think they decided probably to.
To do with measures, yeah.
Okay.
Leaving in the traffic court.
Not sure about that.
Be very careful with that. The twenty-two lots.
I think they're individual water meters for each house.
Is that a final decision?
I don't know that.
Think we need to have a discussion. So we don't have another leisure lake situation.
Amen.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, Melody's talked about, I mean, billing along with, because they do the electric and stuff out there too. Instead of having you say, I build it.
That would be. Advisable, I think.
Interesting. Uh, John is on, so we, what's the desire of the board?
He's on our agenda, let's.
Do it, yeah, okay.
You're on live, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, good morning.
Good morning, John.
How is everybody today?
Good, we're fine.
Well, good. So, uh. As far as, uh, I wanted to give you an update. I talked to Rick again yesterday and I've, and we've been talking with Alex. Alex has got most of the civil done at this time. Uh, we were approved for the variance for the vehicle Sally Port. And uh, the twenty, uh, on uh. This fifteen. And on the twenty-ninth tomorrow night, they should be approving the variance on uh. Uh, metal building. Uh, being for the, being fourteen foot off the property line on the twenty-ninth, it did not appear to be a problem. Uh, but they had failed the, uh, it did not get listed on uh, public notice. So they wanted to put it up till they could approve it on the twenty-ninth. So it does not appear that it's going to be an issue. Uh, the sidewalk, uh, I'm just having Alex draw the sidewalk in, but they did approve, uh. The exemption for the sidewalk is walking trails on the opposite side of the street. So, uh, all that's been approved, so that allowed Alex to move ahead. Uh, we're in the process of reviewing the final civil engineering drawings on that. Uh, I talked to Rick yesterday. Uh, we would like to have, but I want final drawings. Uh, by the sixteenth of November and then we did the first or second week of December around sixteen. So I'll have confirmation of that and uh.
How much time do you give them to come back with their bids?
Uh, usually about three to four weeks.
I thought we were bidding in the.
I thought we were bidding in, either the end of October, the first part of November. And now we're gonna delay it till the, probably the middle or end of January?
No, we're gonna bid it on the, in the first or second week.
Have you given two or three weeks to have the bids come back in, that's the middle, middle of January.
No, we would have the plans out prior to that in acto, in November. Like the first week in November, or the third week in November, plans would go out and then we would bid at sixteen. Either the fourteenth or sixteenth of December.
That's when the bids come in.
That's when they come in, yes, that's correct. And then we would award on uh, twenty or twenty-first, uh, the twenty-first. Yeah, I, I'm hoping we move it up, so.
Is there a reason why we can't move it up, John, is there a holdup on the final drawings? Or what's uh, what's the reason that we're not going out first part of, middle of the, of November?
Well, I did hold up the mechanical, electrical and plumbing contractors due to the variance, we needed to get that. So I've been working with the city three to four weeks on that, on variance. So I didn't wanna get it drawn and then have to redraw the whole, whole plan either. And uh, I know Alex was working on that also. So.
Well, the sooner the better.
I don't know, prices haven't come down yet. Yeah, I, I agree with you and uh.
What they are, we're, we're gonna move forward.
We have to move forward either way.
Yeah. So I, I just, I, I wanted to get some tentative dates for them. And uh, because I gotta start finishing up all the documents, I gotta file a public notice. So I'll be sending them to you for review, the public uh. A notice has to be no less than four, no more than forty-four days. So I wanna get that all prepared for you also, so you can take a quick look at them. But basically, I, I have all my front-end specifications put together and I've been talking to contractors. Uh, to solicit uh. Uh, contractors to uh, bid project.
So. We're. We're approved for the variance for the Sally Port and we, we think we're gonna be approved for the variance for the building, which doesn't matter one way or the other. So can we get this thing staked? I mean, I see you sent the uh. Um, specs for the building this morning, I mean, we've been talking about that for a while. Um, so is there a possibility to get this thing staked out?
Uh, yeah, we can get it staked out. I mean, we have to get the proposals back from contractors for the building, of course. Uh, but if you wanna stake out, we can stake it out, I mean.
Well, I guess the contractors would like to know where it's going.
Oh. Uh, yeah, yeah, we have a site plan, I can send it to this. But.
Be the sensible thing.
I mean, if we send a site plan with it, I am put uh, down here on the thing attachment. And then send the site plan with it, with the location of the building.
We have a final site plan?
Yes.
Do we have a permit for the water and sewer hookup for that building?
That building is not getting water and sewer.
It's getting a bathroom in it.
It's not getting a bathroom in it. When we get a bed, we, we talked about this. We weren't putting a bathroom in there. We were only putting electrical in there and H V A C. Why would there be a bathroom out in the.
I thought we were having a restroom in it, because we're an office area for you.
For an office area, oh, no.
Your work office runs onsite.
Uh, we use them blue bathrooms. I don't, every contractor coming in the new building and using the bathroom, so.
Alright.
Uh, no, I, 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 my understanding is we weren't putting any restroom that was gonna be mainly used after the back for storage.
It'll still have water, because they're gonna use that to wash. Won't there be water in the building at all?
Oh, if they want, if they want a hydrant, a frosty hydrant or a hydrant inside. That's not an issue, that would come off the existing building, you're not gonna have a meter specifically for that building. And if you wanted sanitary for that building or you change your mind. Then sanitary would come off the main sanitary for the main building also. It wouldn't be necess, you, you're not gonna have two water meters coming in the building.
No, we don't want two water.
Yeah. So I mean, if you change your mind or you give me a directive to go that direction. But my understanding when we had Brennan there and everybody else, that we're gonna be using that mainly for storage. And uh, that we were not, it was decided we were not going to have a restroom or anything.
Okay, okay. John, this is Lisa, I do have a question, when you talk about uh, public notice. Does that mean like notice in our local newspaper?
Uh, what they're requiring now, this is, they require uh, you file with master builders. Everything's online and then we'd have to file on the county website. Uh, and then we have to uh. Provide, and master builders will provide uh. Oh, uh, confirmation that it's been posted.
Do you do that, John, or do we do that?
I, 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 I post it with the master builders. And then I'll have it all put together and then we'll, I'll work with you to put it on the website.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I noticed that you had a meeting set up previously with Heidi Q, have you followed up on that meeting or I hadn't heard anything on that?
A meeting with what?
That meeting was canceled with Heidi, um. We're gonna schedule for a later date.
Okay.
He asked about Heidi, cool, from Northland Securities.
No, she was just wanting to make sure we were all on the same page. And if we're on the same page with the bidding process and when we're going out for bonding here, we need to keep the ball rolling.
Understood. No, I just hadn't seen anything come up, I knew it was being rescheduled, I hadn't seen anything come up yet.
Okay, so. With this, with that being said, can we go out in November for bids?
Yes.
Somehow, what are we waiting for, the final plan?
Yeah, we're waiting for the final plans to be issued and as soon as final plans are issued, you'll be approving them. And then uh, I'll be uh. So we'll, we'll have to confirm the final dates here and then uh, bring the plans up, review them one last time and specifications. And there's a process that we need to go through as far as. Starting to develop the resolutions necessary for uh, approval of plans when they come in.
So do. Does the architect do the final plans with all the electrical and plumbing and all of that, that's what you're waiting for?
Yeah, all the final plans will be put together for civil, electrical, mechanical. Uh, which includes H V A C plumbing and architectural. And we will have, I believe, six bid packages, there'll be a general contract, a construction package. Uh, plumbing. Uh, H V A C. Security electronics and uh. Detention equipment. And then there'll also be electrical. And fire sprinkler. And then there'll also be electrical and fire sprinkler.
So does Rick issue the final plans, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and on his last email, I, did I see that there might be an address change for Rick?
Uh, address for himself, yes. Address and uh, and his email changed outlook instead of uh. Whatever it was before Cox.net.
Good. And are you still planning to do us and Together We Build at the same time?
Uh, I talked to Mark Sheets and several of your contractors around the area, they'd like a two-week gap in between them.
Okay, wanted to make sure that wasn't holding us up for going out, who goes first?
Uh, I, I think that you're probably gonna go first.
Thank you, yeah.
I mean, I, I want this plan out and, you know, as soon as possible. Because I wanna be able to approve material and order material during the winter months. Uh, of course, construction wouldn't start till the spring. Uh, lead times have not gotten any better. Uh, realistically, but if we start in spring and get this thing approved this winter, then we can work through the winter as far as. Getting contractors, uh, you know, we gotta review all the material and everything else. And uh, then we can get the materials and stuff ordered and coming. So we maintain the schedule for you.
Okay, so have we decided then, or we don't know until we get the final plans? If we can get the final drawings, can we have uh, the plans go out? The first part of November instead of the third week?
Yeah, they're, they're going out the first part of November. I, I, I just, I, I'm given, I, I want an opportunity to review the plans, make sure they're all. Uh, prepared and make any changes we need to make. Uh, so, I, I told them later than the sixteenth, I wanted them out. Or the week of the fifteenth, so one, two. So I mean, we could be bidding like the seventh, the seventh, I just. I just said fourteenth or sixteenth, if I move it up, I'm moving it up.
Okay, let's, let's keep, uh, keep us posted on that.
That's our desire.
Yeah, well, I have to uh, I mean, we have to approve them as a board. You know, too, to go out, so. So have you had a chance to review while we're on metal building, have you had a chance to review that?
Well, I just got him at, when I walked in the door this morning, so the only, there's one, uh, one line I read here. It does not have to be a chain-driven opener, right, it can be belt.
Okay.
The new ones are belt, right? The new open overhead door opener?
A lot of them are chained, but you know, I, I, I can change that.
I just need that opener. I, I haven't really read it over, John, no.
Okay, well, if you have any comments, and do you have a list of contractors?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, if I could get that list, are, are you wanting me to distribute this?
Well, it's part of the. Project, isn't it, or, or what, I guess that's what I'm thinking, I, I don't know, I guess.
I, I mean, I don't have a problem distributing it, I, I just, you don't want approval. Right now, I have the proposals going into uh, uh, to Lisa. Uh, I mean, I can have them sent directly to me, but uh, I wanna be able to qualify them. And I have that they'll forward any questions to me.
It's okay to have them sent to the auditor's office as a sealed bid, and then we will open them. Here in the uh, boardroom at whatever date.
You wanna send this out to the contractors or do I want John to do that?
I think John should send them out.
And I thought the list of the contractors went with the specs for our county, though it not. That's what you were gonna do. I don't, I can get that through next door.
Let me put it this way, my computer got, I came back in the office and I said, looks like my computer restarted. I got hacked with ransomware and I had to redo my computer and when I, I found out how you clean out your email account. That uh, when it came up, I didn't have any sent files, deleted files or anything left on my outlook or addresses. So uh, if you could resend that to me, uh. And if it has contractors on it, then I'll issue those. Okay, uh.
To date then, to have this building uh, be bid.
Uh, it's set for, I, I said I wanted uh, proposals should be addressed. Uh, by October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, so I would have the opportunity to uh. Contact contractors regarding the bids.
I mean, we're, that's only two weeks away, we even got it out there yet.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, that's what I, I mean.
Maybe we have to send out.
Uh, I just put a tentative date down there, I mean. If they go out this week, you know, if I get them out to the contractor this week. Uh, we can, I just put a date down for October fourteenth. So if they went out this week, I'd give them all next week and the following, it'd be the following Thursday. Uh, if you'd like me to give them two weeks, I can go to them the nineteenth and uh. Bids, I, what I was trying to do is get it so I can get it reviewed with the contractors on a Friday. And then get it to you and then we make a decision, get it to you like on a Monday. Uh, an analysis or, or a list of what the bid, a bid tabulation. So we make a decision on the, on the following Monday, Tuesday, you know.
We can get the jail itself state and maybe proposed building, when, when, when can we get that state?
The what state, the metal building?
All the jails.
Why, wait, we're not gonna do, stake out jail building at this time. The, you know, you gotta pay the survey or, I mean. Why would you go out and stake the jail?
Can I see how close it is to the other building if I can't see a stake in there?
But you're only talking about just the corners of the building, I mean, you're not talking about.
Well, I can have Alex go out there and stake the building if you want.
I think so they have a rough draft of where everything lays on the land, John.
Well, if I send them a site plan, they will, but uh, if you want that, both buildings staked out, I'll get, give Alex going and stake them out.
I was just gonna say, is it current, is it?
Yeah, I don't think it's.
John, we're questioning here if we have a site plan already, do we have one or?
I answered that question, yes, we have a full set of site plans, we're just reviewing the final site plans that Alex has developed.
No, do we have one here, has one been sent to us?
Uh, you had a preliminary one that I gave to you originally with uh. And it had two different site plans, it had one with the setback for the fourteen foot and one with the setback with the thirty foot.
They're looking now, yeah.
I remember seeing it in your email.
Uh, I might be able, I can bring it up on the screen if you'd like.
Is there something that you can email us and we can print it? Or just send it to Alex, he can.
Yeah, I can. Alex has it, I mean. Uh, you want me to send it to you right now?
Yeah, sure.
We can send the one with the variance, so that way we know. That setback, the fourteen foot, is that from the property line or from the curb, or how would you get that measurement?
It's from the property line, so you're about forty-five foot back from the curb.
John, is this the plan that you're gonna send us?
I believe so, I, I.
This is the site plan.
I don't see no building on here.
Right there. No, it says the building is forty by sixty-four. Why? Not even space between these two buildings.
So if we give you a list of the contractors, it can be sent out this weekend?
Yeah.
And then have it back by?
Because, what does our meeting look like for October nineteenth?
Yeah.
No, that's what I'm just saying, make sure that.
If we get it to you this week and you mail them out, can we have the, make sure that they're back by the nineteenth of October?
Okay, so um, how about nine thirty? How about at nine thirty, tentatively scheduled, the bid opening for. The middle storage building at the LLC. Is that, what do you guys think about that? Nine, John, we just scheduled, um, based on your, your schedule, October nineteenth at nine thirty. Is the.
Uh, can you give me just a minute, uh? So. Okay, so I've sent you the current plan, now I gotta figure out how to open up Zoom again here.
I think we have a plan here.
That's the last one you gave us, cause I wrote it up, but my copy and put it back there.
Oh, good God, okay. I, I can share it on the screen if you'd like also, but. And it has all the dimensions on it.
See if it's the same one that I have here.
Is that one got dimensions on it?
Well, it doesn't have enough dimensions for me to tell, well, how much distance. What I'm concerned about is the exercise area sticks out to the north, toward the utility building. My concern is if we ever finish them two corners next to the exercise or expansion. That we have rooms still, you know what I'm saying, going around and getting into the building. I don't know what the distance is between the exercise, the north side of the exercise building and the south side of the utility building. I, I can't, Larry, maybe you can read that, maybe there's footage there somewhere, I don't see it.
Oh, can you open the plan that I sent to you? Cause I sent you the plan, because Mike, you and I discussed the dimensions off the. East side, the north side, and all the dimensions are listed on the plans that I sent you.
See, so, this building might be even with this.
Yeah, it's not in the right location here on this one.
It could be, we don't know, we didn't.
Getting ready to print it what you just sent me.
Cause we have to move this up here to the driveway, you could pull over them doors.
Finish this corner and this corner, that's gonna take away from, I don't know what.
Well, if you pull this up to here, it's lined up.
We lined up with the Sally Port.
Sally Port, yeah, here, it could be. But there's still some interference with that corner here.
Possibly, if we, yeah. I don't know what the distance is from here to here, it doesn't say that here somewhere.
Yeah. It's not a lot, because this is forty.
Okay, okay.
Scales about fifty foot. That's not very far. And maybe that building can go further north too.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm saying.
Can you see this now?
Yes.
Okay, you're fourteen, here's a steel building, here's your exercise area up in here. This building's been moved down and this is a seventy, forty-eight by seventy-two showing here.
Okay.
You're fourteen foot off of your property line, approximately forty-five foot to the curb. On the east side, you're a hundred and thirty-five foot fifty inches. Pull it up here. And then this is your concrete paving, you're sixty foot away from your uh, property line on the north side. And you're uh. So you're, you're a hundred and sixty-two foot from here and uh.
What is that little drive you got there from the Sally's Board out to the exercise area, what is that?
That is a sidewalk, you're required for fire egress to have a sidewalk. If there's, if there's a fire, all inmates will be brought to this, but every entrance has to have a, a concrete. Paved type of sidewalk to a point of egress, which would be your parking lot.
Okay, so what is the distance from that sidewalk to the storage building?
That sidewalk to the storage? I believe it is uh. That was one of the drawings that we had done about Mike, I believe it's like uh, sixty foot.
Is that enough room, or should we move that building to the north?
Uh, that should, it should be enough, you have all this parking lot here and. If I needed to, I could move that sidewalk closer to the building probably.
Is there a reason why we can't take that building north fifteen feet?
We, no, we can take it fifteen foot to the north, I, I was just, I. Thought when we discussed it, that you wanted to leave enough room to put solar panels behind it also.
I was thinking then to the east. I, I'm just worried about coming in there with a truck and trailer going into that building, you know what I'm saying? I guess you can drive it to the sidewalk at this point, but if you ever add on, yeah.
I mean, that sidewalk, I don't even have to bring to there. I, I would, what I would recommend, rather than anything else, is that you just bring, you see this line here?
Yeah.
Why aren't we just bringing the? Why aren't we just bringing the concrete out to here, the paving? You know, up against the building, then you're, you're probably ninety, ninety foot or whatever there to the building.
But when we, if we ever add on to the jail, wouldn't we build on both sides of that exercise room?
Yes, if we ever added on, we would build on the both sides.
Okay.
I mean, you could move this paving down and bring it into here, though, you know, but.
A corner stakes even, that's all you need is corner stakes.
So the office area, the storage building will be on the east side?
The what?
Isn't there an office in there?
No.
No.
Open building.
It's just an open storage building, we'll have a table set up in there for operating out of and for storing all the material in.
Okay.
I guess, John, if it's possible, I would like Alex to stake the corners of them buildings, that's all I need. Even just the Sally port and the corners of the building.
The corners of both buildings you're talking about.
Yes.
The visual, I might be out of line here, but I just might see a visual.
And do you wanna move that building fifteen foot?
I'd like to see the stakes.
Fans, Mike wants to know how close it's gonna be.
Well, that building would be fairly high for solar panels to be behind it, on it.
Uh, the building, we talked about fourteen foot sidewalls, and I have the doors that are twelve by sixteen right now.
Yeah, so the gable end is to the east and west, right?
That'd be correct.
Okay. And I would think, Larry, that that hundred and thirty-five feet to the east.
That's where I would see it, solar, yeah. And now behind it, though, I mean, the building, fourteen foot walls, your peak is going to be another eight foot higher.
Yeah, if you can put them up against the property line or not, I don't know. I think we have plenty of room to the east. So have, have, we decided you're gonna contact Alex to see if he can stake two buildings, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I would like to know if we're gonna move that building back fifteen foot, so I can finish the site plan, I mean. I gotta have, you, you're wanting completed plans, so I, I would suggest we make a decision on it. Trying to print it out right now, so that I can scale it up and give you exact scaling of what that building is.
So, um, so we got sixty feet from the north side of the building to the property line, right?
That's correct.
Okay, move it ten feet.
Ten foot towards the north?
Yes.
Yeah, let me get that plan up.
And then fifteen is ten, I just, I just feel, I just feel the distance between it. Whatever it is, it is a sidewalk, if it is a sidewalk, it's planned on factory, and it's paint, somebody paints a drawing on the.
Yeah, the, the peak is eight foot higher than the walls.
Did you? We want any changes to that, we need to do it now, so we're changing the date of the fourteen until the nineteen, for sure.
It's not on his desk.
We can probably go back and look at your email that you sent, John.
If David didn't have one there.
We're gonna do ten foot further to the north, so, okay. We decided ten foot, move ten foot. I don't see that area behind there being used for solar, I think would be on the east side of that building, now that we've moved it to the west.
So where did John disappear?
But he also believes that for the Sterling shed that they.
Sterling shed what?
I guess we just need to.
We can certainly advertise it. Hey, what? So how long are they saying there's a wait for a wood building?
Get the building, but you can't get and put it up.
Oh, we got Marty.
That's true.
So from the vehicle Sally port, you're approximately a hundred and twenty foot from the face of the vehicle Sally port to that sidewalk, you're approximately sixty foot.
Move it ten feet to the north.
Move it ten foot to the north? Yeah, we'll get that done.
And we were just talking here, we were talking to our engineer, and he thought we put our last secondary road building up, that we not only sent it out to the contractor, but we advertised, is that?
All that does is delay us.
I, I kept, uh, and the last one, you had electrical, HVAC, uh, concrete, uh, excavating and everything else, right now I have the excavation separate. Uh, the building, building the building pad separate. I mean, if you want it all under one contract, I can, what I basically have under this contract would be, uh, the building itself, the concrete, uh, walls and floor, and the erection of the building, and, you know, the insulating and everything else. Are, are you wanting to, if you're wanting to publicly bid it, we would have to push back a little bit further.
I don't necessarily want to do that, no, I just want to do it correct, I mean, whatever, what's our legal advice?
Are we required to advertise it?
Yeah, that's a good word.
Uh, if you're over a hundred and thirty thousand, you would be required to advertise it.
What's your estimate of this, John?
I, I would figure, you, you know, on a forty by sixty-four, you're gonna be in eighty, ninety thousand dollar range.
It's a bigger one?
Uh, you might be up towards a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty. I mean, you could, you could bid out the building, and we'd bid out the concrete separate, if you'd like. Get the building bought, and then bid out the concrete with, uh.
We should include the concrete with the building, whatever it is it is. I don't know that you have to include the electrical, but until we know.
Uh, electrical, we just sleeve in there, I would not have the building contractor do the electrical. And HVAC, we can determine what we want in there, whether we want the heat pump in there, or what we want in there.
Well, there's a good furnace at the hospital we could use for that building.
A what?
There's a furnace at the hospital that was recently put in about two years ago. That could be used in that building.
And what is it, gas rooms?
Yeah. City gas.
I mean, I can, I can certainly put it out public bid, if you'd like. Or we could ask for two se-
If we're gonna use that, that's, that throws a whole more different thing going on, too.
Yeah, uh, unless we want to bid, bid the building and then take the concrete as a separate bid.
So we do want, do we wanna build the bigger building, is that what we're gonna plan to do?
We're gonna see what the bids come back.
Yeah, well, right now, what we have in there, Jack, is we have, uh, the base bid in forty by sixty-four.
Right, right, right.
And then an alternate to add, uh, to pro, provide a forty-eight by seventy-two or standard size building.
Larry, what would you say about putting the concrete in the building together, I think they should be together.
Well, they could be two separate bids, yeah, or you can leave them together.
Yeah, I'm not sure which way to go with that. I mean, a lot of the builders gonna have somebody else do the concrete.
They are, they're gonna have.
Yeah, they're, they're not gonna probably do, some of the builders are not gonna do the concrete themselves, they're gonna go out and solicit proposals for the concrete. So if you'd like me to change it, we can change it to, uh, two separate bids that we're soliciting a proposal for the building concrete foundation and excavation, and then, uh, a proposal for the build, to supply, install, and erect the building. And that would probably make a little bit more sense, go that direction.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, so I'm gonna separate concrete from the building package. And we're moving the building ten foot back, and I'm gonna add that, uh, the site plan will be included.
Building's going ten foot north, not back.
I, I meant ten foot north, back, back towards the property line. I think we're on the same page, Larry, but thank you. Ten foot to the north, and then you want Alex to stake out the building and such?
I, I would like just the corners, I, I mean, if that's possible.
Well, yeah, that. Are you wanting just back corners, or you want the front and everything, and, uh, jail? Just all the corners on jail, right?
I would like all the corners, yes, if that's possible.
Okay, that's not a problem.
I mean, that way we're, it's done.
Yeah. And, uh, what we'd like to have is, uh, proposals back by the nineteenth through the twenty-first, and then a board on the twenty-sixth, is that correct?
That's. In October, right?
Yeah, by October twenty-sixth, we award the bids. But I could have the bids either back in the nineteenth, I may push it back to twenty-first to solicit some more people. I know that, uh, Mark Sheen was interested in some of that, uh, project, so.
So we're gonna present on the twenty-sixth then, open up on the twenty-sixth, and then award?
No, no, we'll open up either on the nineteenth to twenty-first. Well, we're not doing a sealed bid and such, Alyssa. I mean, they're just gonna drop off bids, I mean, if it's not a public bid, they, they can email it to you, so, uh, it, it would not necessarily be where we're gonna have, uh, a public opening on this, it's gonna be that the bids are gonna be submitted to you, we'll mark them that they were received on time, and then I'll be able to review the bids immediately with the contractors, make sure I qualify what they've all included on the twenty-second, and then get them to the board, to Luann, on the twenty-fifth, you know, I can get the bid tabulation to her and twenty-second. And then on the twenty, that would give the board a chance to review them over the weekend, and on the twenty-fifth, and then on the twenty-sixth, at the regularly scheduled board meeting, we could award bids.
I'm just concerned about opening all the bids before. Where are we gonna have to say? We now understand what you're doing.
Well, we're not doing a public bid, but such, otherwise we have to go through the entire process.
I wanna be very transparent about this, John.
Okay, I understand. Well, then, uh.
I mean, I just, it, it makes me nervous, I, I'm, you know, I don't want anybody to accuse anybody in the auditor's office of.
Limiting proposals?
Yeah. I, I.
I think you're right about that, I, I don't know, even if it backs us up a little bit, I think we need to advertise.
Okay, then we do everything on the twenty-sixth, I guess, we open them up and then, but I'm not gonna have a chance qualified bids at that time.
That's fine, we can open it preliminary, and then with checking, then we'll do a final thing the next week.
So what, so John, just so I make sure that I explained it, Mike, correctly, what we're proposing right now is that we do, uh, all of the bids that come in for the building comes in on the twenty-sixth to the boardroom.
Yeah.
We open up. And then you're looking at awarding potentially on November second.
Oh, we could award it the twenty-sixth.
Well, I'm not gonna have a chance.
Then we need to approve it, I mean, we could.
I think you're gonna wanna look at, to make sure that John has the time to review the bids.
Well, that would have to happen once we open it.
Why can't we have a special meeting on the twenty-first of, uh, October, on a Thursday? Or not?
Open the bids, probably.
Open the bids, that will allow me to come back and, to come back here, qualify the bids on the twenty-second, or even possibly meet with the contractors that day on the twenty-first, qualify bids, and then we come back to twenty-sixth and award it.
Okay, so I, I like that, too. Okay, so it's gonna be, I I like that too. There are gonna be two separate bids then, correct? And both bids are coming back on the twenty-first or second, say.
So we're gonna have a special meeting on the twenty-first to open up both sets of bids.
Yep, bids will be due by, uh, let's say two P M. I I gotta believe UPS and everything would be there, Lisa, by then. If somebody was mailing one.
Next week, we'll have to.
Deadline is Friday?
We'd have to get, we'd have to get notice in the paper by Friday, so then they would.
Are we doing a public bid and a public notice on this then?
That's what we're talking about right now, John. We're trying to decide whether to advertise or not. We do have some contractors right now. We have names of contractors right now.
We have the name of contractors that bid on the last shot. But they wasn't sent to them, it was advertised and they bid on.
Well, that's what we're gonna do this time and then we could have the bids due by the twentieth of October.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-first.
He wants to meet on the twenty-first to open them.
Oh, I thought you said twenty-first or twenty-second.
What he's talking right now.
And I'll qualify the bids on the twenty-second.
Open on the twenty-first, qualify on the twenty-second and award on the twenty-sixth. So special meeting on the twenty-first.
So these specs and this proposal has to be here by Thursday per se to get it into paper next week.
It has to be into the papers by this, this Friday, by noon, to get it in the papers next week.
You're only gonna publish, you're just gonna publish notice and then people are gonna come in and request that piece of paper that's in your hand.
Okay.
You don't have to publish that. All you have to publish is.
We're just gonna publish that.
You're seeking bids.
We're seeking bids for this building and an option and concrete.
Okay, so can you have the specs to us and the two, the two specs to us by Thursday or Friday?
You don't need the specs. You you're just putting a public notice that, uh.
I need the specs.
They won't be hit the paper until the following week. So we, we have a, yeah, that's okay.
I want them as soon as I.
I get that. I I understand.
You're not gonna put all the specs in.
No, 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 but I want them here available or to look at before they're coming to get them.
Okay.
This is what I'm saying.
So the seventh or eighth, we have to have it to the paper so that it can be printed on the thirteen.
I think twenty-five.
No, I tell you, you're having it to the paper this Friday, which would be the first.
The first, and it'll be on the paper on the sixth and seventh.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be in the paper, the sixth and seventh.
And that would give them two weeks then to prepare the bid. Yeah.
Okay.
That, that only give them one week for this.
Two weeks from the six, ten, until the twentieth.
They'll give them from the seventh until the.
Basically from the sixth, they don't hit the newspapers on the sixth.
Yep.
And then we're giving them until the twenty-first and twentieth.
They have to have it in here by the twentieth and we open them on the twenty-first.
You can give until noon on the twenty-first if you wanted to give an extra half a day.
Whatever.
Yeah, see, you know, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if you're going. John, are you okay with that schedule?
I'm fine with whatever you tell me to do.
Okay, so I mean, you've got very little to change here on these specs, correct? Other than separating the concrete from the building.
That's correct.
Okay. So then we can have the specs, we're just telling, we're proposing to build this size or a option would be two different sizes.
That's right.
Uh, that's not a problem. I can put that together. I I mean, what I'm gonna tell them under both, I'm gonna break it. I'm gonna leave this first part the same, uh, Mike. As far as the description of the building and then I'm just gonna put some language in there. Uh, right before the second page, that would say it will be bidding and the two bid packages are to include foundations will include, uh, the concrete package will include the uh, concrete, the floor slab, the stem wall, excavation and, uh, exterior and, uh, foundation installation and rock. And it will be based on the forty by, uh, uh, the forty by sixty-four building. I I also want, uh, and then I want an option, uh, alternate, propose, uh, alternate ad to increase the billing to a forty-eight by seventy-two.
Correct.
And, uh, so, you know, we'll, we'll just have that on both of these that they can bid that direction.
So would you hand that to Luanne and ask her that? I want three copies of it.
Okay.
Yes, I agree, right? We agree with that, guys?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And then I'll be issuing, uh, you know, I'll keep, uh, plan holders list and then I will be issuing, uh, the site plan with it. And I will, you know, we'll, I'm gonna be up to the fourth, right? We're meeting on the fourth for the hospital.
Yes.
So I will bring additional copies of the full-size site plan. Uh, Alex modified it to ten foot back, but I'll have full copies of the site plan that if contractors want to, they can come in and pick up a full-size copy to scale off of. I can electronically send it to them, but if they come in and ask, uh, Lisa for a copy, I wanna have a copy available at the auditor's office.
That'll be fine, yeah.
So.
Well, at this point, by Friday or by Thursday or Friday, you're gonna have us, um, the public notice.
I I'm sending the, uh, is, uh, am I developing the public notice or is Lisa?
You were gonna write up the public notice, yes. Just like you said you were gonna do, you were gonna separate it? And say, this is what our proposal is? Right?
Yeah, I was doing public notice for the main project, but I can put something together that Lisa and I can work together on. Is that okay with you, Lisa?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just send something general and if you wanna make any changes. And are you, you're just posting this in the local paper and?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or, and then on the website, 'cause typically you're not having to post it in the paper anymore, 'cause they were concerned about counties paying for it.
We're a little old school around here. I think it's gotta go in the paper.
Okay, that's fine. And then you can also put it on your website if you would choose, so.
Okay.
And I'm changing it, the bids would be due twenty-first. And then, uh, bid by two P M. Is that fine with you guys? Or do you wanna move?
It's fine. The bids don't have to be, oh, they're gonna be opened on when?
The twenty-first.
Twenty-first at two thirty.
I would just say at two oh five, because sitting there waiting for a half hour, so bids are due at two P M. Uh, they'll be read and opened, uh, publicly in, uh, in, uh, in the board meeting at two oh five. And then, uh, uh, the proposals will be re, the proposal, decision on the proposals, the, but bids will be awarded on the twenty-sixth. Which is the next Tuesday at your regularly scheduled board meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I'm also gonna put in there that contractor, uh, has the ability to bid both proposals if they so choose.
Yeah.
So they can bid concrete, if they have especially, if they wanna do the concrete, they'll provide us a concrete. And, uh, they can provide us a separate concrete bid and, uh, a building bid if they so choose.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't have to break concrete out if you're doing a public bid, but I just think that that would may give you.
Also, I think that's a good option.
I I I just wanna get as many local people involved as I can. I guess the thought process is what you've told me, so. Okay, uh, I'll get that working.
Sounds good, John.
Okay.
Know what Alex says or what his timeframe is?
I'm hoping Alex, it it shouldn't, I I'm hoping Alex can just make a quick change to that plan that we have. Either that or I'll just note that it's gonna move ten foot to to the back and scan it through.
I don't think it's gonna make you.
I mean, it's a preliminary, uh, site plan for construction. Alex is gonna lay, lay building corners out for them, so realistically, I wouldn't even have to make a lot of changes on this plan. Uh, basically, I could just note that instead I could cross that sixty foot we're looking out at, put fifty foot and just put a note there on the existing plan about Alex can't get it moved for me. And we'll, we'll make it happen one way or another, bleeder blister, 'cause, uh, so, and then by the twenty-ninth, which was tomorrow night, we should have the variance approved too, so.
Okay.
Okay, the last item I have to go over with you, unless you have any additional questions.
You go ahead with your item and roll from there.
Okay, so I I have the project cost recap on invoices that I received. Uh, and I I'll be sending the hard copies to, uh, Lisa to sign. Uh, right now, as far as, uh, our, uh, invoices for the month, I have the architect's design development of fifty-three thousand, forty dollars. Uh, construction documents, uh, that are forty percent done and the amount of sixty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, and three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents and, uh, and reimbursement costs as basic for travel expense to meet with the sheriff and the staff and come up to the meeting with you also. Uh, to go to the existing, go or the current plans. Uh, as far as construction management, be at seven thousand five hundred. I had, uh, reimbursables in the amount of five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, which was, uh, mainly mileage and, uh, small amount of printing. And, uh, bid document reproduction and the amount of eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. And, uh, and going down the line, I have underlying item five point six permits and fees. I have under a current bill seventy-five dollars. That is for the, that is a check that I will need for, uh, made out to the city of Macokada. And that's for the, uh, fee for the variance. I have listed that on the second page under, uh, uh, note two, uh, that, that, that's a current amount due for a check to the city. And Lisa, I don't need that check right away or any checks right away. It'd be at your normal processing time.
Hey, John, all of these fees got approved today in the claims. So we do have a separate check to the city of Macokada for seventy-five dollars. And we do have a check for you and for Rick also that got approved.
Okay, uh, can we just get, uh, they, they have a new building inspector, Scott Worth, over there? Uh, either I can pick that up on the fourth, Lisa, if you wanna just hold on to it. I can pick that up on the fourth and then just take it over to Scott. And that way we don't have mailing back and forth and, and we know the check got to the correct person. Is that okay with you?
Uh, yeah, and they don't need it for tomorrow night's meeting on the twenty-ninth.
No, they do not.
Okay, no, we'll hang on to it then. I'll put a hold on it.
Yep, and, uh, you know, I'm getting older, so if someone reminds me that that check's laying there when I come up, that'd be great.
Oh, well, we'll take care of you.
Okay. Um, so those are the, the invoices for October first, twenty twenty-one. And it's our B R recommendation that we go ahead and prove pay application for October first.
If you would like it, that's okay with you, John, considering that we, uh, paid those claims today, I will have the board sign the hard copy next Tuesday.
Uh, yeah, uh, if it's already been approved and, uh, we're meeting on the fourth. You know, they might be able to sign them right then too, if they've already been approved.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions that you might have? Now, is a board, all the board members attending the meeting on, uh, on the fourth, did you go to the hospital?
That's the plan, yeah.
I I I would think that that would be necessary, 'cause otherwise we get off on different areas and, and stuff. And if all of us are there to make the decisions, that would be great. Uh, and, uh, Lisa, you're gonna let Brett know about that or someone will let know Brett know about it?
Yeah, yes, yes, Brett's been notified.
Okay, and that is scheduled for ten A M. in the morning?
Yes, at the old hospital, ready to meet him over there, so. You're gonna have to really, John, a little squirt you over there.
Okay. And is, uh, Jack, do you know, is Amber planning being there that particular day also?
I do not know.
Okay.
Doctor.
I will talk to, uh, Dean today and see if they're wanting to meet with me on Monday also. Uh, with Together We Build.
Amber's the same day, John. She knows that.
Okay. That sounds real fine. If you don't have anything else for me, that's great. I'll, I'll make some additional copies of the site plan for the board to have on hand too, some large copies.
Okay.
Okay, appreciate all your help.
Sounds good, thanks, John.
Yeah, have a great day, guys.
I just think that's where, well, a lot better to advertise it is to pay more contractors out and say, why didn't everybody get a chance to bid it? We certainly want.
We have to have everybody able.
Everybody opportunity, maybe we can.
Okay, is there any other business to come before a meeting today?
No, it's to my agenda, which is we don't.
Yeah, we are. Have a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
And moved in second to, to adjourn all those in favor.
Aye.
I, motion carried.